Town meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please put your phones on airplane mode or turn them off for the meeting, please, tonight? Upcoming meetings, Citizen Advisory Committee meeting will be Tuesday, October the fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, here at seven thirty P.M. Quarterly Planning and Zoning meeting will be Monday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty P.M., here. And that will be on the Dunkin' Donuts, correct?
Yes.
In case anybody wants to attend.
Yes, sir.
Town Council meeting will be Monday, November the fourth, seven thirty P.M. Any other upcoming meetings for anybody? Anybody else?
Not this month, no.
Okay. I need approval of the town meeting minutes for September the third.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented for September third, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Buckman. Is there any other discussion? On the meeting minutes, any changes?
I had done, no, thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries four to one.
Four to zero.
Police report.
Four to zero, Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
Can you restate it?
Four to zero. Four, zero, one?
Commissioner absolved.
Good evening, Deputy Whitehouse with the Sheriff's Office, Frederick County Sheriff's Office, with the September two thousand nineteen police report. You can see the calls, the majority of these, we have a lot of nine-one-ones from the Saint Joseph's Ministries, again, across the street. Got some noise complaints, where I'll touch on that here shortly. The traffic stats for the month, there was a hundred and twenty. You can see the citations, the warnings that we issued. The arrest violations are down there, two traffic, there was three criminal summons served as well. Bottom of the page shows the special assignments that myself and Deputy Aholt and/or Sergeant Hillman were at. We were at the Reagan years concert on the fourteenth. And we had roll call on the sixteenth. Thought there was another, thought there was another page, but... To the back, the additional information, we continue to do the school safety checks at Emmitsburg Elementary and Mother Seaton School. There was a search and seizure warrant served at Two East Main by members of our Frederick County Narcotics Task Force. There was a theft from an unlocked vehicle, one this month. Like, once again, I know I've said it a bunch of times up here to lock your cars.
I've said it a bunch of times.
Yes, I guess this, I don't know if it's gonna do any good, but lock your cars and take anything of value out of sight. There was destruction of property of two vehicles, I think one was partially set on fire. There was a hood that was scratched up as well. Reference back to the noise complaints, I did meet with the Mount staff last week in reference to the several noise complaints on West Main Street. Met with the President, the Dean, I think the Vice President as well, so I think we kinda have some kinda plan, we're at least gonna start notifying, well, I'm gonna start emailing Kathy every Monday, if there's any kinda noise complaints on the, you know, from the weekend. And the Mount will be notified by one of our lieutenants of any kinda calls for service in town regarding the Mount students. I know there was a complaint about, there was students were gathering in the pool lot, I think, believe it was two weeks ago, and they left a lot of empty alcohol containers, and there's video of that apparently, but I'll get to look at that and see what we can even do at that point. Down at the bottom, the last thing is just the court days that myself and Deputy Aholt had. Is there any questions for me at all?
Any questions for Deputy Whitehouse?
Deputy, one item under traffic stats for warnings.
Yes.
One thousand two hundred sixty-two, is that...
That's, yeah, that's up to, that's...
The total so far this year, stops?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, as of September, so... Yeah. So there's more than that now, at this point.
And regarding the car, car was set on fire?
That's what, that's what, that's what she alleged, I mean...
I think it was a car seat inside the car that was set on fire.
Okay.
So do we have a sense that that was, is that still in investigation?
Yes, yes, yes.
And scratch toes, vandalism, separate vehicle?
Separate vehicle, yes, yeah, that's one of those, yeah, they're still in our investigation, yeah, at this point.
Thank you.
We have Halloween coming up, on the thirty-first. We will be having a parade, so if you guys can...
We'll be here.
Be for the parade.
Yes. Yeah, we'll be here, yeah.
So it'll be at seven o'clock's the parade.
And...
And trick or treating is at five-thirty.
Five-thirty, okay. Very good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Town managers' report.
Good evening, this is the town manager's report for August two thousand nineteen. I'll highlight some of the key areas. Related to streets, staff conducted their monthly street sweeping, repaired and replaced some streetlights. Contractor removed and stump grinded four trees on Saint Joseph's Lane. Staff put Chesapeake Bay markers on storm drain inlets on East and West Main Street, as well as South Seaton Avenue. Staff mowed weeds in the curbs and all the developments, and weed ate and weed killed around guardrails around town. Related to parks, they conducted their daily park checks, conducted monthly park maintenance, mowed, trimmed, and weed killed in all the parks. They removed grass and weed killed on ballfields in Memorial Park. And a contractor removed and stump grinded a large dead silver maple tree in Community Park. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is currently point-two inches below the spillway level. It's at sixteen-point-four feet, the spillway level is at sixteen-point-six feet. Lake quota is not being met due to the poor water quality from the lake. The inflow of fresh water into the lake has really slowed down due to the lack of rain. For example, in the month of September, we only received point-two-five inches of rain. You'll see highlighted the well levels. Water production and consumption, we produced an average of two-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight gallons per day and consumed an average of two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty gallons per day, which the equivalent is about twenty-one-point-ten percent, which is backwashed water. If you'll see the highlighted areas, we only were able to get thirty-nine-point-five percent of the water in the month of August from the lake. We strive to make, meet at least fifty percent. We purchased four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-fifty gallons of water from the Mount this month. Related to wastewater, we received two-point-five inches of precipitation in August. We still have a surplus, and this was as of the end of August. We had a surplus of seven-point-two inches over the last six months. At the wastewater treatment plant, we treated an average of three-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand gallons per day, and we consumed approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty gallons per day, which means thirty-five-point-one percent of the wastewater treated in the month of August was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage, and we did not exceed the plant's design capacity at any time in August. The wastewater treatment plant ran very smoothly in August. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of October. Underneath there, you'll see some of the highlighted meetings I attended in the month of August. Some noteworthy items, staff installed some new water meter upgrades. Currently, we only have about a hundred and fifty left to install. Staff cleaned up and put down topsoil, seeded and mulched around the E.V. charging stations behind this building. We repaired three leaks and currently investigating one on North Seaton Avenue. And they were preparing for the manhole installation on East Main Street. That did start the week of September thirtieth. Work is on hold due to some minor complications. We're just waiting on a new structure to be built by the contractor, and then we'll finish up with the manhole installation. And that's the manager's report.
Any questions for the town manager? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just one, sir. The conference call with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, is that related to pumping station?
Yes. That was related to the initial grant for the preliminary engineering report and the environmental report. I'm pleased to announce we were awarded the thirty-thousand-dollar grant for the initial report, so we are moving forward with the contractor on all the preliminary reports. USDA is currently reviewing them now.
Congratulations, that's great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ritz?
I have two. One, update on the grant status for the ADA compliance in Memorial Park. Are we, are we any headway on that, or is that still in process?
The ADA grant?
The compliant, the grant for ADA compliance in Memorial Park, you know, around...
We submitted the grant, well, we have not received an update on that. That would be through community parks and playground, and they usually make their notifications in spring? May, May of two thousand twenty.
Okay. And number two, I see the, regarding the complaint on DePaul Street and the sidewalk, have there been any updates to that?
It was completed.
Okay.
I think it was last week, October first, I believe.
Is that where the tree was taken out?
Yes.
And the resident is very satisfied with the work.
Good, good, I'm glad.
Commissioner Buckman? Do you have any questions?
I don't, except I was wondering the status on the pool house upgrade or renovation.
We actually have a final walkthrough with the contractor tomorrow morning? Tomorrow morning? To go over the final plan for it, and they anticipate beginning work within the next week or two.
Will the parking lot be closed to the public during that time?
We will probably not close it entirely. We will probably limit parking to the back row to allow for the equipment and a dumpster and anything else that the contractor might need, but we won't close it completely.
Any questions?
I have one, the leak on North Seaton Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Is that down by the gas station?
Yes. I'm being told it's just a small leak, that I believe Commissioner O'Donnell reported the last meeting.
He said something to me about too, that they thought there was a leak there.
Yeah, it's... Right, it's a very small one.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Town planners' report.
Hello, everybody, this is the town planners' report for August two thousand nineteen. I'm also going to highlight some key areas. For the Board of Appeals, I received and processed two variance requests and staff reports for three oh-one West Main Street and one forty South Seaton Avenue. For the Board of Commissioners, I wrote the North Seaton Avenue Bridge replacement request letter, prepared the proposed firewood use resolution and policy for the September third meeting. I started, and I spent a lot of time working on updating Town Code Chapter sixteen subdivisions. For grants, I completed and submitted the fiscal year two thousand seventeen Community Legacy Facade, seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant final report. Took inventory and created maps of all locations that are required to have ADA ramps throughout town. This information will be used to apply for a community development block grant in the future. Applied for an impact grant from the Community Foundation of Frederick County. Created a news release for being awarded a five-thousand-dollar grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust in order to start a new rain barrel program. For MS four, Municipal Separate Stormwater System, I continued working on the MS four yearly report, which is taking a long time, it's a very lengthy process. For permits and zoning, I issued ten zoning permits for this month, two, and also two no permit needed county, Frederick County forms, and also four cross connection permits. Prepared the Frederick County logging permit for Stand Five, processed the state stream crossing permit for Stand Five logging. Under miscellaneous, Amy and I are working and we created four hundred new property folders this month, and that equals all of them now, it's over a thousand. I attended the all-day National Safety Council Defensive Driving Course on the twentieth and created the state required Forest Conservation General Plan, which also took some time. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the town planner? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritz?
I have, I have one, the, regarding the grants for the ADA ramps, does that include the ramp at the corner, potential ramp at the corner of DePaul? And Saint Joseph's, did you say that, if you did, I apologize, but...
No.
No, we're not, that, that particular location, that does not include that. That's a state road, and they will not put a ramp on that. We are investigating, and the mayor and our Director of Public Works have met with the church on other possibilities as far as an ADA ramp, possibly along DePaul Street, but one right on North Seaton State Highway will not approve. And with it being a state road, they won't put it in there. So we have already talked to church, and they have come up with some good options that the town will be able to pursue through this grant. So it's not, it's not a dead issue, it's just keep it right there.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of the options was that there would be a spot to drop someone off and then go park, but when it's a handicapped person, you can't merely drop them off.
Correct, and that's still, also, state highway would have to approve that as well, so we're trying to look at some other options that, that we might be able to do on our end.
Yeah, it was kinda weird how they put the ramp in there to begin with, because during a funeral, I had to take my mother-in-law out into the street into traffic and bring her back in to get onto the ramp.
That's all right, thank you.
Commissioner? Buckman, you got any more?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I don't have any either, thank you.
Mayor's comments?
Oh, thank you. Gentlemen, ladies, no comments?
I'm sorry, I skipped one.
Commissioner comments first.
Sorry, we'll let him go first.
Do you have a comment, I'm sorry?
You go first. I'll get ours afterwards. All you want, Commissioner?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner's comments, that's my fault, I skipped it. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir, hi. Thank you so much. Congratulations to all who participated in the election process. Thank you for so many folks coming out to participate as voters. It was a great voter turnout, it was very nice to see. Congratulations to our winners, Mr. Davis and Mr. Burns. We look forward to working with you guys, I personally look forward to working with both you, I'm sure the board does, but I'm not gonna speak for the board, 'cause I can't. Moving from there. I was invited to serve on the pedestrian committee for Frederick County. Mayor John Conard of Thurmont stepped back from that committee, so... They invited me, and I've been approved, so I'll be doing that, representing the North Town. Very happy about that, you know, bolster our voice in downtown Frederick and Winchester Hall on behalf of, you know, our community. Commissioner Buckman, I would say, sort of tongue-in-cheek, congratulations on your newfound freedom. You have served us well. You gave a voice to those who might not otherwise be heard. To Commissioner Blanchard, who could not be here tonight. My first experience dealing with Commissioner, long before I even thought about being a Commissioner, was with Commissioner Blanchard. I greatly appreciated the fact that he stopped, he listened, and he took time to hear what I had to say. And I know that one day I will be where he is now, looking at a meeting that I'm not in. For those who are coming in, I'll share that I was thinner, had more hair, and perhaps younger. So things happen over time. But to both of you, thank you very much for your service to the community, and we look forward to you guys. I understand you both will be continuing to be your volunteers, so thank you on that much. For town staff, clarification of backflow devices, I've had a lot of questions about that, so I've tried to direct folks to the town manager to talk about that. And I've had complaints from neighbors in Carrick Court regarding a home with cars parked on the yard. So I will proceed that later with staff at a better time. And just conclude my comments, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Ritz?
My hair thinned out a little too, just saying.
You got time.
Congrats to Commissioners-elect Davis and Burns. I look forward to working with both of you. And I, it's, to echo what Commissioner O'Donnell said, I wrote these down, sort of word-for-word, but thank you to Commissioner Blanchard for your many years of service, and to Commissioner Buckman for her determined efforts as being a voice to those not heard. I also welcome the opportunity to serve with both of them again. And thanks to everyone who came out to, it was a great turnout, so thank you.
Commissioner Buckman?
Yes, I really enjoyed the last four years that I've spent in service to Emmitsburg. Of course, three of those were as a Commissioner, and I'd like to share some reflections with you, if you indulge me. I may do a mayor breaks, sorry. I've had the great pleasure of working with many passionate people, especially on my Citizens Advisory Committee and throughout the community. And we've been able to accomplish a great many things that I'm very proud of. Our community now has a Boys and Girls Club. We have been able to continue and successfully put together the Turkey Trot for Hunger, which raised three thousand dollars for the Seaton Center. We've collaborated to get folks to their medical appointments through the Vincent DePaul Society and through other volunteers throughout the community. We have supported numerous people getting their GEDs, which have led to jobs and careers for them. We've started to have tough conversations to address racism. We've advocated for hundreds of families to help find homes, furniture, and school supplies. We have reduced drug trafficking. We've trained community members to use Narcan and to help fight against the stigma and got dozens of people into drug rehab. We have facilitated literary, la, literacy support systems, mentoring councilmen, women, and children. We have supervised hundreds of community service hours issued by the school system and the court system. We have worked to create inclusive, accessible town governance by translating the town affairs and codes into regular language so people could understand it, and we've listened to a lot of complaints. We have generated a great deal of positive media coverage for Emmitsburg and established cooperative relationships with law enforcement, neighboring municipal officials, executive directors of all community outreach programs, the governor and his council, our county executive and business owners who have sought to improve our community. We have supported focus groups for the Healthcare Coalition and hundreds of people seeking grants for much-needed home repairs that they couldn't afford. And we have continued to build strong, solution-oriented relationships with the administration of Mount St. Mary's, which I hope to continue growing. We have worked to improve overall quality of life for the citizens of the town. I remember not too long ago that we weren't occupying our free spaces, and it was not looking too good for Emmitsburg. We've risen up out of that, and we ought to keep doing that. So as I transition from my official position as Commissioner, I pledge to continue to wake up each day with a vision of possibility, to stand with the people of Emmitsburg to problem-solve through networking and advocacy. I personally pledge to continue to work collaboratively with the town of Emmitsburg and the mayor and all the board, Mount St. Mary's, our civic associations, our churches, our health department, our fire department, our cooperating municipal officials, housing, the Seaton Center, the Ship of Frederick, mentoring service, as many more as we find creative solutions to the problems that we face day in and day out. Today, I woke feeling a great sense of relief, not because I wasn't elected for a second term as Commissioner, but because we have gained two very innovative Commissioners with fresh perspectives. The energy for needed change and their own social networks to continue to strengthen our community. I thank you for stepping up to do so to our community as you take this critical office of Commissioner, securing our community's future. I want to share some insights that I've learned over the past three years. Being a Commissioner is challenging, and it's not for the faint of heart. Listening is paramount in order to represent your constituents who have sometimes very, very different experiences than yours. You need to listen deeply with your heart. It's equally as important that you listen to each other, and there's a lot of times we disagree up here on the board. And it's easy to raise your voices, block the expression of ideas, or even gossip about each other. As a Commissioner, you need to work with all of your strength to have these difficult conversations, even when you don't want to listen. To listen even when you are uncertain and uncomfortable to consider and hold the ground, growth mindset that our community really needs. Reading and research. It is very important that you read the community plans, the employee handbook and everything, and become very aware of what our mission is in the town. We need to uphold integrity for our community and align our policies to action. And in our handbook, one of the things it says is our continued success is also dependent on the public trust, and we are dedicated to preserve that trust. It is critical that we hold each other accountable with transparency. Can I have a few more minutes?
Yes.
I don't know what that was. Continue.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Our handbook states that all employees have a duty to the town and to our community residents to act in a way that will merit the continued trust and confidence of the public. As with organizations, we need to work on communication to consider and work towards what is fair, just, and inclusive and equitable. We need to be kind and look for solutions that enable and grow rather than punish and diminish. The outcomes of this election are evident that the people of Emmitsburg are calling for a radical change. They are looking for you to champion them. They are looking for action to be heard, to have a role in the growth of this town. We do not need town governance that is governing for the people. We need a town that is governing with the people. I have heard there was a time when our town meetings were packed like it is tonight, and people got there early just to get a seat. People came and voiced their thoughts and concerns, and it was not always pleasant. It was passionate and sometimes even loud. And people knew they would be heard and considered. We need to work hard to ensure our community knows they still have a voice, their involvement is welcome, they have a seat at the table. That's the only reason we have a government. We need a town governed that will work to navigate policy, regulations, status grants, and relationships, and yes, to revitalize the community-driven solutions. And yes, for the whole community. We are a town that measures our success by collective wins. We have heard a lot about vulnerability in our community, about the poverty and the needs, and it is time now that we focus and build on the strength that we have collectively created and grown Emmitsburg as a jewel of Frederick County. We will not improve this town with individual accomplishments, not with ego, not with power. We will grow through focus on collective efforts, we have to unite. So in the words of Coretta Scott King, and in closing, "The greatness of community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." So good luck, and I will always be here. I will always be a voice to the people, whether I'm a Commissioner or not, and I'll always be here to champion the board and the mayor and the town staff and our new Commissioners, so welcome.
I don't know how you think I'm gonna follow that up, but it was an honor to work with you the last three years for being Commissioner, and Glenn too. I wish Glenn was here. I've been with Glenn for about nine years, I think, or a little bit longer. And he'll be missed, and so will you be. Thanks for Emmitsburg care. Thank you.
Mayor comments?
I'm clear.
I'll start with Glenn, he's just been representative, he's been here a long time, very quiet, but engaged. Sometimes it doesn't seem, when you're seeing out there, he's engaged, but he's listening and processing and listening to everybody. And he served, he serves his profession as a school teacher here in high school, and that stability, it brings a lot, and you'll want it back. I hope we can give that to you in the years coming. My dear friend Liz, I've seen her in action three, three times. We had a community issue in our little segment of town, and along with my wife Libby, they started something, worked on it for about a year, and then we resolved it, and it morphed into Emmitsburg Care, cares, and then the Turkey Trot. I was desperate at the last minute, it's a really interesting...
Two weeks' notice.
It's a really interesting, wonderful event, wonderful event for us around Thanksgiving to have, and Dave Wiegalt family had done it, and then they gave it to somebody else in the, at the last second to fall apart. But she stepped in and ran the whole thing and helped the handoff to the EBPA to keep this as a wonderful Thanksgiving Day event for us in the morning. Serve your conscience by going for a walk or a jog, and then go back and eat as much as you want. But the third thing is, I asked her to run for a seat here, if we present, and short order, she said yes, and she served.
Well, wait, hold on a second. You asked me every week for about three months to do it.
Well, that's shortened.
You broke me down.
All right, something like that. But she said yes and served our town, and served a lot of people. And the only remarks I could really come up with, her ear was close to the ground. She heard a lot of people that we generally, maybe walk by or don't listen to, or don't have a constituency. So, stay with us, stay involved, and.
Oh, I can't stop.
And run, please run again. If I could, I'll take a few moments to go over my activity last month. September 9th, I met, had lunch with Ron Sardiky, Executive Director of the Fallen Fires Foundation. I met with Pastor Marty and Praggy Mallard, Daddy Eball up at St. Joe's on the night. That night, we had the appeals board meeting where I made a presentation along with the town planner for this subdivision of 140 South Seton Avenue. 9/11, we had a moment of silence here in the office, and it's a tradition we have here. It was a very special time for us, every time we do it, and we continue to do that. Green Team meeting on the 11th, 13th, Dr. Bernard Franklin, VP for Student Life at the Mount, Mount St. Mary's. He and I took a tour of the town. I wanted to show him some of the history he would never have known about, and about education to African-Americans. It was very, very, I had the opportunity to write a paper on that for my thesis at the Mount, and a very exciting shopping with the Mrs. at the Emmitsburg Farmer's Market. I hope you all stopped there. It was terrific. The people we had there were A-line people with wonderful product, and the farm prices were terrific. Accepted $25,000 check on behalf of the town from the Catawba area Civitan Club for our accessible playground. That was on the 17th, 18th, sworn the new election judges, Charlotte Mazaleski, Tracy Lewis, Sharon Hane, and Tammy May, who's back here with us today.
Thank you, Tammy.
On the 20th, Grandparent Parents' Day, these are wonderful things over at Mother Seton, and I just want to share that tradition, get to meet, we're out meeting people. On the 23rd, at 6:45 in the morning, I was a greeter AM at Thurmond Elementary. It was a drug-related thing. You know, we're here to welcome you, your love, and nobody bullying. You can always like somebody, reach out to everybody. It was a wonderful program, was sponsored by the county and the public schools, so it's actually incredible. We met with the accessible playground at the site on the 30th, Emmitsburg Plan Commission that night, was there again to make a presentation on the subdivision of 140 South Seton. At the election, congratulations to Frank Davis and TJ Birds. We are enthusiastic about the energy you're going to bring here. I know it's going to be a wonderful Rain Barrel Workshop. Jimmy Click, Dan Fissl, and I, again, were over at St. Joseph's, all that outback flow, and also on the sidewalk. Town clerk and I met with the Wayside exhibit designers. We have four more of those coming, the Chronicle, Catawba, Carriage House Inn, The Great Fire, and Digital Host. It's going to be, we're going to add to the three we have this year. And then this weekend, I'm coming to a close to unveiling Lady William Cochran Volunteer Glass Etching. I mentioned that eight years ago, I asked Mr. Cochran, "Please go up here and do a wall mural," and then he gave me the price, and it was, it was a wrong time. We couldn't afford that, we had other things to do. But we have a William Cochran work of art here, which is like the community bridge down across Carroll Creek, and it's an affinity group we have, Fire Department, the Fire Service. But it speaks to the volunteers here, with this whole avenue coming down here, the sisters who fed and gave the grounds for the Union troops before they went up to Gettysburg, then they came back here, and they tended to them, and they're wounded. Motorola Solutions and the Board of Directors for the National Fallen Firefighters. We had dinner on the fifth, and then a welcoming address at 38 National Fallen Firefighters and War. 119 firefighters were honored this year. Perfect service. If you've never done it, don't get out of here without doing it. It's absolutely incredible thing. Thanks for doing it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One more thing.
Ms. Buckman?
Just one more thing, as my last act as a commissioner, because of the health and safety of the community. In the new playground, the accessible playground, the shade, the temporary triangular shade things, we would love some of those at the community pool because of people needing to be protected against the sun. I think we'd have a lot more attendance if we even just had a temporary thing that could come down in the wintertime that had those posts.
We actually, and you approved as a board at the last budget, some transfers into the pool to buy umbrellas and tables and chairs for the pool. Those shades that you're going to see at the ADA playground are very pricey, so with the constraints of our budget, we're going to buy umbrellas and some chairs and some tables, so we will be able to provide some more shade.
Okay.
At least for this year, and then we can investigate more in the future.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor?
I have one.
Mr. Ritz?
Nothing that was on your list, just something I was following up on, I haven't, we haven't talked about for a while. Do we have any updates on the second entrance to North Gate? Any process, progress on that?
No, we know the piece of ground that's on Irish Town Road is on the market. It's been publicly, we get calls on it, I think, our planner can tell you, we were getting calls on it, but it's listed and publicly on the market, but there hasn't been a bite there yet. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, any questions?
No, sir. Thank you, Mayor, for your remarks, and Commissioner Buckman, again, thank you for your, and Commissioner Buckman.
Do you have any questions for the mayor? I don't either. Thank you, Mayor. Public comment. I might get some of these names wrong, so don't yell at me if I get them wrong. Amy Bowman, correct? And it's on disc golf?
Yes, and you got my name right.
Okay.
I must be coming a lot, so I don't know if it's a good thing.
Did you want to save that for disc golf?
Should I? Do you want me to?
You can either say it now, or you can wait until.
I just heard that, so I wanted to throw that out there.
I mean, if that makes more sense, to wait until the layout, that's fine. I can wait.
Is disc golf on here?
Yes.
All righty. Everybody who's going to be doing disc golf, there is one, two, three, four. Are you all speaking at the disc golf, or you want to speak now?
At the disc golf.
At the disc golf, everybody? Okay. Diane Warbecker?
In case something comes.
In case something comes up. Okay.
I'd just like to get my hand on there.
Okay, Anne Howes? Old Camper Construction?
I live on Bollinger School Road off of 140, and every day when I come into Emmitsburg or leave Emmitsburg, I pass the old dilapidated trailer, I don't know if anyone can hear me, I pass the dilapidated trailer from the workmen that are working on the bridge, apparently. And it gets worse every day. There's dumpsters all toppled over, the trailer's looking worse every day. I think they use it for their lunch hour. I see their cars or trucks parked there. But it's a terrible eyesore for anyone approaching Emmitsburg from the east, and it's on the left side, I don't know how anyone could miss it. And I just wondered, when I talked to the office here today, I was told that it's the state's responsibility, it's not Emmitsburg's responsibility. It's on the other side of our bridge coming over the highway. And I just wondered what anyone knew about it, and it just bothers me. Every day I go by, and it looks worse and worse and worse, and the thing is about ready to fall apart.
You're talking about where Frank the Vegetable Guy was? Where Frank the Vegetable Guy used to park?
Say that again.
Are you talking about where the Vegetable Man parked at with the little van?
That's right. He's no longer there, of course.
That's, I thought that was the trailer for Rutgers.
I thought so, too.
It's a state highway trailer. What we can do is contact our state highway representative and let them know that a complaint has been issued, but it is their responsibility to clean up and take care of, so we'll certainly get in time.
It needs to be cleaned up or demolished. I don't know where the workmen can go, but it just seems like there should be a better arrangement, and it just looks terrible coming into Emmitsburg, and I don't know what people think of it, it's an old, dumpy, old rusty.
Well, now they got to have it safe for them to work in.
Dumpster's falling all over, and it just looks terrible.
Make sure it's safe for anybody to go into.
That's all I have to say.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Ms. Willis, is that the, one of the offices for the shoulder work and not the bridge? Or is it the bridge?
I don't know which project it was for. I believe it showed up prior to the bridge project, so what we'll do is contact somebody at the district office to find out exactly whose trailer it is and let them know the complaints that we've received.
Sure. We have a bridge rep tonight, maybe we can share that, too?
Right.
They are here tonight.
Right.
All righty, thank you. That's the end of public comment for now. Onto administrative business. Presentation by State Highway Administration on the 140 Bridge Project.
Good evening, Mayor.
How are you? Good to see you.
Good evening, also well commissioners. My name is John Concanon. I'm the District Engineer for the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration, District 7 Office, our office located here in Frederick. This evening, I wanted to give you a quick update on the Maryland 140 Bridge Project, and then before I turn it over to one of my team members, I'd like to introduce the SHA team that's here with me this evening. We have Bruce Kane. Bruce is our Assistant District Engineer for Construction. You may have remembered about a year or so ago, we were here with an update, and Neil Haynes was the Assistant District Engineer for Construction. Neil has since retired, and Bruce has taken on his position. We also have Ross Klingon. Ross is the Area Engineer for Construction overseeing the project here on Maryland 140, and Ross will be providing the update here this evening. And we also have Elizabeth Harris, and Elizabeth's working with the community. She's our district community liaison, providing updates as we receive complaints. We will also be looking into that comment from the last person with regard to the trailer. From what Ross had just informed me there, that apparently is a trailer being used by our contractor performing work along US 15 at the St. Anthony's Road intersection. So that's probably something we need to check with that contractor to get addressed. So let me turn it over to Ross, give you a quick update, and then we'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Currently, on the bridge project, we're in Phase 2 of the bridge work. The bridge itself has been completed. We're waiting to complete storm drain work on the west side of the bridge, which they completed last week. Then we have some storm drain work to do on the east side of the bridge, install curb, sidewalk, and paving. The contractor anticipates working this week, barring the weather, to remove some of the asphalt on the west side of the bridge, and then on the east side of the bridge, so we can do the base paving. And then the next item of work will be to switch traffic and put traffic on Maryland 140 into the ultimate configuration of lanes across the bridge. And then our last phase of work is the third phase of work, which involves putting sidewalk on the bridge, where currently the traffic is running right up against the wall of the bridge. There's also a sidewalk, just like there is on the portion we poured this summer, that has to be completed, and then sidewalk that goes alongside 140 from Creamery down to tie into the other side of the bridge at Silo Hill. And then we'll remove the temporary pedestrian bridge and complete the paving and striping on the job. And we are still pushing the contractor to try and complete that work this year, but that's, that's what we're still pushing them to do, but I can't stand here and give you a guarantee that that's what will happen, but we are still pushing them to do that.
Now, we have a manhole goes in, correct?
Yes, they've been, our staff's been coordinating with State Highway on the installation of our manhole. We're keeping them apprised with every step.
Now, that's not going to hold them up, or?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So then, if you have any questions related to that, I'd be happy to answer as best I can.
Are you able to clear off some of those barrels, so it's not as distracting for people to drive through that area while you're doing some of the other work?
The sand cushions are to protect the ends of the barrier wall from traffic hitting them, so they can't be removed until the barrier wall is picked up. But once the paving is completed on Phase 2, then all that barrier wall and those barrels will come off the road, and we'll be putting the traffic in the ultimate configuration on the bridge.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I gather you all seem to have inherited this, but this has been a disaster for our community in many ways. We've gotten such horrible feedback about this, and it's been perhaps, you know, everyone wants to say, "Well, you know, the town didn't provide this," or "The contractor didn't do this," or "State Highway's engineers failed to recognize this." It's, it's been a burden on our community that didn't, that I feel wasn't necessary. I mean, we deal with professionals here across the board, and you are, and I don't doubt that, but the reality is, the timeline for this has just been a disaster. And my concern is, if it does come to, you know, a failing on our part, share that with us, so we're better. But the other side of it is, if that company that you're dealing with is considered for a future task, maybe reconsider it. Or if you have an assignment like this where staff is rotating out for whatever purposes, you know, if this is a stepping stone in their career, or a stepping stone from their career, it seems to hinder the process, and we've suffered for it rather dramatically. I sat with the secretary this summer at MML, and one of the anecdotes that was told to me is coming from the gas station, and I would say that's part of, let's say, sort of the general store idea, the sort of, you know, we are a small town, we get feedback from that staff there. They were told by the construction workers last summer and this summer, that because there weren't enough workers on the job site, they weren't working that day. Now, when I shared this with the secretary, he assured me, "No, that wasn't the case. There were some other issues that surfaced, and a miscommunication or whatnot." Well, the reality is, that message being communicated to the community is what the reality is to us. I mean, that's what we hear.
Sure.
And we heard nothing other than that one very polite conversation with the secretary, which I appreciated, to refute that. So, we do like you guys, believe it or not, but we want better. I mean, honestly, we deserve better, and it's not just that we're special, it's just that we're all special. And we take a great deal of ribbing from the community, you know, the Hoover Dam was built in shorter time, bridges in North Carolina were built in shorter time, the Empire State Building was, you know, built in the Depression in a shorter time period. I feel we can do better, and my hope is, as we move forward, again, if it was a failing on our part, share that with us, so we can do better. Maybe, you know, the contractor, get it squared away with them. If it's, you know, a stepping stone, don't make it a stepping stone. Put a committed staff there and pursue it. I mean, I know you're professionals, and I respect that, but the outcome on our part was just a sufferfest, so we hope we can avoid that in the future.
Sure, Commissioner. And I understand fully that the work out there, we're very disappointed in how things have gone. I understand that living in the community, that having the construction going on impacts everyone's lives, and impacts people who commute to work and coming home, and it just detracts from the overall appearance of the town. And we recognize that, and we are unsatisfied with how the project has gone also. I would not lay any of the blame on the town. It's all, I think Kathy and the staff are very good to work with, and they've worked closely with our project engineer, who we've had the same project engineer on the project the entire time until the last six weeks, and she has only left because she received a promotion within our office. But we have another project engineer out there who I'm sure will continue to work with the town as much as possible. But we are unsatisfied with the progress of the job also, and, you know, we have addressed that with the contractor, and we will continue to address that with the contractor until the project is complete.
Right, thank you, that's appreciated, and I was kind of expecting to hear that about our staff, but that's good. Thank you.
Commissioner Ritz?
No, Commissioner O'Donnell echoed a lot of the comments that I had, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell echoed a lot of the comments that I had, so thank you.
Commissioner Buckman? I do have one. This lady here is the community liaison for the town?
Yes.
How do we contact? I mean, how do the citizens contact her?
She's at our district office in Frederick. They can call there. We have the email also available to discuss.
Beginning of the project, they gave us numbers and stuff.
Is it posted anywhere on site?
On our webpage.
No, not on our webpage. I'm talking about on site, on your.
No, it's not posted on.
Oh, you don't have a main bulletin board there on your site there?
Not for that kind of thing, no.
How about your, don't you have an office?
We have a field office in town.
Right, is it there?
No, it's actually located off Creamery Road and that business complex there.
It would be easier if they knew, if they could get in contact with her, easier if they had a place to go.
She works, Elizabeth works in our district office in Frederick, and I'd be happy to give that number out to anyone who wants to know. And if someone contacts Kathy and the town, they can hand that phone number out or give our number to our staff here in town who are working on the project every day, and they could give Elizabeth the information if someone wants to talk to her.
I have forwarded her some complaints that we've received. And I will say, she's been very responsive anytime I've emailed her. Their district numbers are on our website. And if anybody would have any complaints related to it, if they do contact the town office, we do immediately forward them on. And like I said, she's been very responsive. So has everybody, so has Ross, and so is Sherri, who is the project engineer.
Along with Commissioner O'Donnell, we do get a lot of angry feedback from the community.
I understand.
In restaurants and stores and everywhere.
Sure.
Considering the bridge project. And there's nothing we had, and it's nothing that the town can do with because it wasn't our project.
Right.
It was a state project. And a lot of the town's citizens didn't understand that it was a state project, not a town project.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I guess, before I leave, if there's no other questions, the trailer that was discussed is actually part of the U.S. 15 widening. And we'll address that with the contractor, but it's not, it's for their staff as an office for the superintendent and the surveyors and that kind of thing out there.
I think that she thinks it's going to fall down because it's in bad shape or it looks like it's going to fall down.
Yeah, we'll have a talk with them about it. And if there's debris that needs to be cleaned up outside of it, we'll have them do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more thing to touch on. You have an email address and a phone number, so if someone would contact our town office, there are individuals that don't have email or website capability. They can't check our website. They don't have the internet. So they just simply call you and then.
Yeah, they should just call the front desk. Terry has some contact information. And if they need further information, I can give it to them or staff can give it to them. Or we can certainly relay the complaints on as we have been.
Is there any way we can publicly announce an email address and phone number in this meeting, Mr. President?
Yes, we can. I don't know if you have the email with you. Do you have it with you? Liaison, lady?
Sure. So, John Concanon again, for the record. So on our m.sh.a. webpage, on our homepage, there is a direct link for customer care service. So anybody who has an issue or wants to communicate directly with an office regarding anything that you see, not necessarily just with the construction project, but anything, if they would click on that link and just fill out the information, it will get directed to us.
What Commissioner Ritz was saying is that we have a huge number of people in town who don't have access to the internet. So if you could just say what the phone number is and say what the email address is in this meeting, people have channel 99.
Sure.
They could get that.
Let me give you our district office 1-800 number, and that will come into our front desk. That's 1-800-635-5119.
And then Kathy, you could state our number, too.
1-800-635-5119.
And then they could call the town office also to get that information.
Correct. And it is, for anybody that does have website, all these numbers are on our website. If they want to just call in here and speak to Terry, Terry can give them all the information, phone numbers and email addresses as well.
And our telephone number is 301-600-6300 for here at the town office.
Okay.
Yes, that's the number, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next one? Is that it? Any more presentation?
No.
All done, thank you. Is there any questions anyone has for the representatives of State Highway while they're here? Now's the time to ask them. They can come back up to, you can come up to the podium and maybe they can answer the question. Anybody? Alrighty, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Approval of the multi-user trail workdays for the fall. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir. Typically, we have volunteer workdays to prep the trail. This would be leaf blowing and cutting back some vegetation on Sunday, November 10th and Sunday, December 15th. We invite community members to participate. They get a free breakfast and a free lunch out of it. There is work between. We ask folks to dress for the weather and the work. Some water is provided. But more to the point, my hope is the board approves these dates, so we can provide that kind of fun day.
The dates you're requesting are Sunday, November 10th?
Yes, sir. And Sunday, December 15th, both this year.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the workshop dates as requested.
I'll make a motion to approve the multi-user trail workdays for Sunday, November 10th and Sunday, December 15th, 2019.
I need a second.
Does that work?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, second by Commissioner Buckman. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Thank you.
Four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Not used to seeing that one. Next agenda item for administrative, it's proclamation thanking John Clapp, Town Attorney, for her service of the town of Emmitsburg.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read that. Thank you. John Clapp was our attorney for 24 years. He stepped down, retired effective October 1st. So we felt, we want to give him a proclamation about that wonderful work he's done for us. Proclamation honoring John R. Clapp, Town Attorney, for his 24 years of service to the town of Emmitsburg. Whereas John Clapp began his service as a town attorney for the town of Emmitsburg in January 1995, and whereas Mr. Clapp has retired as of October 1st, 2019, after 24 years of outstanding meritorious service to the town of Emmitsburg, and whereas Mr. Clapp has been practicing law for over 40 years, and whereas through his 24 years of service, Mr. Clapp has been an integral link to the town of Emmitsburg by providing sound legal advice to the town through an estimated 1,500 hours of legal counsel and an estimated 325 legislative documents. And whereas the Board of Commissioners, Town Staff, and Emmitsburg community have greatly benefited from the knowledge and legal expertise of Mr. Clapp. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor, the board of commissioners, and the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby express our sincere and grateful appreciation to Mr. Clapp for his 24 years of service, and do hereby extend our congratulations to him on his well-earned retirement. We wish him continued success, happiness, good health in the years to come, adopted this seventh day of October 2019. Mr. President, this requires action from the floor.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the proclamation as read.
I'll make a, okay. I make a motion to accept the proclamation honoring John Clapp as a town attorney as it was presented.
Second? Motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman, second by Commissioner O'Donnell. That's echoing again. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries four to zero. I think it's going in and out. Next agenda item is proclamation for October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you very much.
Your speaker sounds so.
Proclamation, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2019. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer this year, an estimated 268,600 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women. And whereas this year, an estimated 41,760 women will die from breast cancer in the United States. And whereas, an estimated 2,670 men will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer in the United States, approximately 500 men will die. Whereas, 1 in 8 women will develop breast cancer in her lifetime. And whereas, there are over 3.5 million breast cancer survivors in the United States. And whereas, during the month, during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research, to educate all citizens about the risk factors, protection, and treatment. And whereas, as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we all support those courageously fighting breast cancer and on their lives and the loss to this disease. Whereas, this October 2019, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families and friends who are tireless resources of love and encouragement and applaud their efforts of the medical professions of researchers working to find a cure for the deadly disease. And whereas, Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer death through increased education, regulation, and regular screening. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and board of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, adopted the seventh day of October 2019. Mr. President, this requires action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need a motion to accept the proclamation as read.
I'll make a motion to declare October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month for the town of Emmitsburg.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Donnell. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries four to zero. We have one appointment for the consent agenda.
Yes.
That is for the planning commission?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I met with Dr. Bernard Franklin, University of Mount St. Mary's. He's accepted my invitation to serve on the planning commission. He was originally going to be an alternate, but with Mr. Davis, now Commissioner Lek, he will become a full-time member of the, and I once again will be after an alternate. So we're working there. But he's a wonderful gentleman and lives here in the community and is a very wonderful addition to our commission.
Agreed.
I need a motion to accept the planning and zoning commissioner replacement.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bernard Franklin to the planning commission for a, what is it, a two-year term?
Motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman.
Yes.
I need a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Donnell.
Five-year term.
Five-year.
Three-year.
All in five-year term?
We're all wrong.
I think he's filling out the remainder of Commissioner Lek Davis's term. And then after that, it would be five. That's my understanding.
Yes, it's from now until 2022 of July. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries four to zero. Treasury report?
Yes, sir. The cash balance as of September 1st, 2019 is $5,702,391. The sum on deposit were $297,596, withdrawals in the sum of $309,216. The operating balance forward at this time is $5,690,771. Listed below are the top 10 checks, and I would direct questions to town staff related to this.
Any questions for town staff on the Treasury report?
One.
Commissioner Ritz?
Sorry, it may be a surprise. Holiday decorations. We got exciting new things in store.
Yes, we're going to expand. As you know, last year, we added the snowflakes to the square, and they were such a hit, we're going to expand in each direction, East Main, West Main, and down North Seton, another block in each direction.
Okay.
We're going to continue to add each year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Planning Commission for report, Zach?
Sure. So we will be having a meeting here on October 28th to review the Duncan site plan. Also, our last meeting was Monday, September 30th. The planning commission approved the proposed subdivision of the 140 South Seton Avenue property. And that's all.
Okay. Any questions for town planner? Hearing none, we'll keep going.
Actually, can I ask a question?
Commissioner Buckman?
What's going on with a possible strip mall that's going on that might happen in between where the Duncan is going and the hotel? And then what happened? I think a hotel was trying to go in there and something happened? I'm just hearing rumors from the rumor mill. If you can provide some clarity.
I have nothing to report on that matter right now.
No.
We don't have anything on it. We've heard the saying, "Talk," but we don't have anything on it as. Excuse me.
Thank you. Anything else? Alrighty, we're on to the regular agenda items. Swearing of the new commissioners. Can Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Davis please come up here? Yes, no?
One day, I can't remember. I guess they think they're seeing it. I step down now, right? I step down now.
Yes. Thank you for your service.
I'll see you again.
If I can have you, Davis, I have a place for you. If you'd raise your right hand. Aye?
Aye. Allen Davis Jr.
Do affirm that I support.
Do affirm that I support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
In the state of Maryland.
In the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
That I will be, will be, will do the best of my skill and judgment.
Will do the best of my skill and my judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute.
Execute.
The office of Commissioner of the town of Emmitsburg.
The office of Commissioner of the town of Emmitsburg.
Maryland.
Maryland.
Accord the Constitution and laws.
Accord the Constitution and laws.
The state of Maryland.
The state of Maryland.
The charter and the code of the town of Emmitsburg.
And the charter and the code of the town of Emmitsburg.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Very. Wherever you would like to be seated, sir.
I'll go.
Picture, picture.
Okay.
I will.
Stuck for three years now.
Seven, yep.
Hey, Matty. Matty.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Davis, where have you seen it?
This one, I grabbed a lot of stuff here.
He's so proud of his dad. He's smiling.
Read them, son.
I read them.
Okay. All right, thank you for accepting this.
Thank you.
Responsiblely. Nope, the office. Aye.
Aye. Thomas John Barnes.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I'll be faithful and bear truth and allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
Support the Constitution laws thereof.
Support the Constitution laws thereof.
That I will do, that I will do the best of my skill.
And that I will do the best of my skill.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Commissioner of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
Execute the office for the town of Commissioner, or town of Emmitsburg.
According to the Constitution laws of the state.
According to the Constitution laws of the state.
And the charter and code of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
And the charter and code of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we have something for you to decide.
Sure.
Here, I'll take that one. Mayor.
Matty. Before you go ahead and get a picture of everybody here, you know, we want to.
They want to get a new group photo.
Go ahead and get there.
New group photo.
Group photo. We get one over here.
You want to sit and go ahead and sit.
Okay, it's the way we always do. Stand up. You can sit there, you can just sit there, we get another person sitting here like we've done every week.
You want to sit there, Mr. Brown?
George, down.
Okay.
We're Husky.
Maybe back from the side a little bit.
Water bottle?
I'm going to take a couple.
Thanks, Matty.
Did you want to be there?
Do you want to be there?
You know, it might get moved around work. There we go.
Matty.
What's that?
It's Commissioner Buckman's key. The front door. All righty, second agenda item. Mayor's recommendation for reorganizing the Board of Commissioners.
As a timely tradition, I make recommendations for service on the board, and I think I've spoken to every commissioner, and my recommendations are for Clifford Sweeney to be president for a second term, Timothy O'Donnell to be vice president treasurer, Joseph Rich III, Planning Commission liaison, Frank Davis Parks and Recreation Commissioner liaison, and TJ Burns as Citizens Advisory liaison. There's a copy of each, and that has to, for you all to agree with that recommendation.
Does everyone have any objections to the way the mayor has reorganized the board? Anybody? Would you like something else, or are you okay where you're at?
I have a question.
Commissioner Ritz.
The way the charter is written, I believe that the positions, so to speak, of the president, vice president, and treasurer are to be, at this meeting, the first meeting after election, we amongst ourselves then elect those three specific positions? It would seem to me, and again, I'm no expert in deciphering the town charter at times, but those three positions appear to me to be three separate entities, and I cannot recall a vice president and treasurer as one position, one commissioner serving in both capacities. Am I, am I overthinking this, or?
Commissioner Ritz, so what you read, there's two separate sections, the charter, which you mentioned, and then the actual code itself, and in the code itself, it reads the mayor will make a recommendation for a reorganization of the board for president and vice president, and there's no mention of a treasurer in the actual code itself. So you have two pretty much conflicting sections. You have the charter, and then you have the code.
2.1610, "At the organization meeting of the commissioners each year, or as soon thereafter as possible, the Board of Commissioners shall elect from among their membership a treasurer of the Board of Commissioners to act as town treasurer." That's where I got that from.
Yeah, and I printed mine out, let me just find it.
It's after the, section two regarding the board.
You're correct on the charter, but then, like I mentioned, you have the charter, and then you have what's called the code. So you have two separate things, and you'll find this a lot in our code and charter, unfortunately. The charter will say one thing, and then the code will say another.
Mr. Ritz, I'll throw this out. For the purposes of checks and balances and the conversation, if you're uncomfortable with it, and I know you're saying this as a neutral party, if you have ambitions for one or the other, I would be happy to acquiesce, if you want to especially take that Wednesday night check-writing session from me. However, it's open. I mean, as these both come down to, as I understand it from reading the charter and the code, we do vote on these, so for one and two, as it were. So I'm happy to offer you that opportunity, if that's something that you're considering or concerned about.
It's, actually, it's nothing I'm considering, I just was a little concerned. I've, you know, the past five years as a commissioner, and then preceding that, I cannot recall the vice president and treasurer being the same position.
Correct. I don't recall that either, and this is not something that I sought, I can assure you.
And I, something else I'd like to throw out there, I've been doing this for five years, and I appreciate the mayor's recommendation for me as Planning Commission liaison, it's something I've been wanting to do for a while. However, putting the town before myself, I feel that Commissioner Davis, who has served on the Planning Commission, might be a better candidate for that position. He's already worked with members of the commission, he knows the ways and means of that commission. Not saying that I can't learn, but I'd throw it out there that I think that he might be better suited going forward for the community as a whole. But I'm comfortable either way.
Commissioner Davis, are you okay with staying there, or would you like town planning zoning?
I'm not going to upset the apple core right now. I'll do whatever you all want me to do. No, I'm good either.
We discussed this, this is, we're supposed to be, he only recommends, so we're supposed to decide amongst the five of us, are you comfortable in the parks, or would you like to have planning zoning? Doesn't matter. Joe?
I'll do either one. I'll rely on that board, I will humbly serve wherever you vote me in.
I'll give you my feelings on it, since I've been here for 20-some years, it's good to get used to, I mean, getting into a different one than maybe every other, every two years or so, that way you get to learn the different aspects of the commissioners, and what they do in each place. So that's my two cents.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Mr. Sweeney, that's excellent advice. Regarding the double responsibilities of vice president and treasurer, it is my understanding that the vice president would only serve as the person who leads the meetings. I don't know there's any other responsibilities beyond, for example, setting the agenda if there is an absence of the president. Beyond that, the powers are somewhat limited, so I don't know that the person who would hold that position as vice president could also sign two lines on a check, so to speak. And that's the power of the treasurer, to review, not the books necessarily, that we go with our audit, but to monitor the check-writing processes. So there is literally a Wednesday night session where the checks that get signed by the town are presented to me, I review them for their clarity, and if there's a question, town staff well knows that I will ask, and as a result of that, basically, it's reviewing that. So if you have a grave concern about that, truly, and I mean this quite seriously, I'm happy to relinquish one or the other, if you're inclined, or if you want to see it go somewhere else, but if I find that there's more in the ordinances that I have not seen or the code, I'm happy to step back from this. You know, it's not something I will argue, nor is it something I would be concerned about. However, if it's our obligation to get this squared away tonight, perhaps we would get it done tonight and submit this to Maryland Municipal League for their review, and should they find that this is an inappropriate action by the board, as recommended by the mayor, we would revise this. Would that be satisfactory to you? And again, I would be happy to step back from one or the other, I have no concern about it.
Hopefully, it wouldn't come to that. I would just hate for something, you know, you never know.
No, I'm with you. Look, trust me, I'm Mr. Conservative regarding the town's management of its money, and again, town staff knows I'm a thorn in the side about accuracy and, you know, procedures. So I fully understand and support what you're doing, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Sure, for sure.
Commissioner Burns, do you have anything you want to add? Are you okay where you're at?
I'm fine, yes.
I need, Mr. Mayor?
My biggest concern right this moment was, we have a shot at getting youth baseball really revved up here, and we have two gentlemen just come onto the board who, working together, I think can really make that happen and really increase a lot of youth programs, and Mr. O'Donnell has been very, very good about, we have to have these check signs, dual signature, it gets really a little crazy in here if that's missed, ever missed, and so I want to keep them there, and his experience in being president of the board on those times when you may not be here or whatever, that was my pure reasoning, but I think we really need a shot right now with Commissioner Frank and TJ, is let's really go after the youth and our programs in the park. We got a good start here, but we need that big push, because we have one more shot at baseball, and I think that's about it. That's pretty much my reasoning for.
That makes sense.
Understand, yeah, it's a shame we have, what, seven or eight fields here, and 125 of our children go to throw them out and play.
May I add one thing? My apologies to Commissioner Ritz, he is correct. I cited the one section that the board and the president and the VP, the following section does where they elect or approve a treasurer. So my apologies. In reviewing the code otherwise, we have not found any problem with a VP and treasurer. I'm more than willing to reach out to MML, but I would not foresee any problems with a dual title.
Again, I'm comfortable with the makeup as presented, I made a secondary, you know, proposal to the mayor's recommendation, either way, I'm comfortable, so I'll leave it to my fellow commissioners.
I need a motion to accept the reorganization of the board as presented.
I make a motion to accept the mayor's recommendation for the reorganization of the Board of Commissioners as of October 7th, 2019.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Burns. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero.
I see two members of the Planning Commission here, so I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Okay, item number three, Potomac Edison right-of-way at the wastewater treatment plant, for consideration.
This will be on page 22 of your agenda packet, and, this is simply a right-of-way for Potomac Edison to have access to the transformer they need to install. Anyway, so the yellow box there is where they're going to be installing the new transformer alongside the garage that was improved, which the board approved construction of several months ago. So the right-of-way is only about five to 10 feet additional space, because Potomac Edison already has a right-of-way through the wastewater treatment plant to access all the lines and equipment that service the plant, so we just need an additional five to 10 feet for them to perform any maintenance on the additional line and the transformer that's being installed. The right-of-way was reviewed by John Clapp, and he saw no issues with the right-of-way. So we need to approve the, the board would need to decide to approve the right-of-way so we could continue with the transformer installation.
So you need approval, a motion made to have them go through the?
Right, to approve the right-of-way agreement. The right-of-way agreement is on page 23, and page 24, excuse me, and it basically just says, "On, over, under, and across the property of the undersigned with the installed facilities being the center of said easement from junction 212335C13266 extending to the transformer."
Mr. Sweeney? All righty, Commissioner O'Donnell?
For clarification, what is the duration of the easement? Is it in perpetuity, or is there a point where there's a sunset, like, does it rescind back to the community, or?
It would be for the life of the property, as long as the town would own this property, and if the property were sold, it would go with the property as sold.
Okay. The other piece is, the, ran into this before, recreational easement piece, i.e., the ability to have a path nearby for some future use, is there any language like that included in this?
No, because it's only about five feet off the roadway, so there wouldn't be a need for an additional path or anything being, is that what you mean?
So, well, I guess what I'm trying to understand, I guess, in addition to that, as I'm looking at this graphic with the dotted line, I'm trying to determine, is this dotted line the service road that we're looking at?
So what you're looking at, if I look at it correctly, is, from what I can tell, and from talking to Dan, because Dan drills me handwritten things, so S is your garage, your A is your transformer, is that correct? Is that, and then that road that kind of bears off to the left, that's the road that leads up to the remaining of the buildings and the plant.
Okay.
And then the road goes back, continues back to the lagoon, one lagoon there.
Okay, so this is the road we're looking at leading to the two items.
The dotted line, yes. Well, the bottom dotted line leads up to your garage. So that's the access road that's going through. If I could get my clicker to work, but I can't.
Well, I'm good so far, so the other clarification I'm looking for is, are we on the hook for any fees or any maintenance or any expense related to this?
And if the property were sold, it would go with the property as sold.
Okay, um, the other piece is the, ran into this before, uh, recreational easement piece, i.e. the ability to have a path nearby for some future use? Is there any language like that included in this?
No, because it's only about five feet off the roadway. So there wouldn't be a, a need for an additional path or anything being, is that what you mean?
So, well, I guess what I'm trying to understand, I guess, in addition to that, as I'm looking at this graphic with the dotted line, I'm trying to determine, is this dotted line the service road that we're looking at?
So what you're looking at, if I look at it correctly.
Okay.
Is, from what I can tell, and from talking to Dan, because Dan drives, drives me hand, drills me handwritten things. So S is your garage, your A is your transformer. Is that correct? Is that it? And then that road that kind of bears off to the left. That's the road that leads up to the remaining of the buildings and the plant.
Okay.
And then the road goes back, um, continues back to the lagoon, one lagoon there.
Okay, so this is the road we're looking at leading to the two items?
The dotted line, yes. Well, the bottom dotted line leads up to your garage. So that's the access road that's going through. If I could get my clicker to work, but I can't.
Well, I'm, I'm good so far. So the other clarification I'm looking for is, uh, are we on the hook for any fees or any maintenance or any expense related to this at any future time related to their easement? Like, do we have to maintain anything? Do we have to build anything?
It says, and we can, we can read it real quick. It's basically permit the installation of wires, cables, conduit or other facilities. The grantors and their successors and ownership of the property shall not, shall not permit others to plant any trees or erect, place any buildings or structures within the right of way except, uh, usual fences nor alter the surface elevation of said property. The company shall have the right to install, maintain, operate and replace its underground and overhead facilities without responsibility for any damage caused, um, without any damage caused thereby to trees, shrubs, flowers or any other obstruction grown, constructed, placed on said right of way. The company, which would be, um, Potomac Edison, shall pay for, pay for or repair all damages to fences, crops, livestock caused by the construction operating, operation, maintenance, rebuilding and removal of said facilities.
Anything here that would limit the access to the roadway?
No.
Okay, so the roadway remains the town of Emmitsburg?
Correct. Everything remains the town of Emmitsburg, correct.
Full and clear?
Right.
Okay, all right, so...
Since we approved...
I mean, they already have a right of way, all we're doing is extending it, uh, five to ten additional feet. They already have the right of way through the plant, um, for other purposes.
So no fees related to it, no digging expenses, no maintenance expenses?
Correct.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
I have a question. When, when they, are, are they putting, are they gonna start putting electric through here? Is that what they're gonna do?
Once they do the transformer, yes.
And that transformer's for our new building?
For that new, uh, garage building, yes.
I have a question. What, if any, risk does it pose to all the plant there? Is it gonna be tied into any of the power to the plants or anything of that nature?
No, it is, the garage itself is a standalone facility, so that transformer will only, um, be used for that garage.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
I just have one. I think I already know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it just so it's on record. Does this adversely affect the solar field in any way?
No.
Is it even close to it? It's kind of like, I think that's an old photo, right?
This is, um, so this is at the end. Where am I at here? Right, the solar is, you come down the access road. Here's the end, essentially the end of the access road. Here's, um, all your headworks facilities, um, your clarifiers, here's your lagoon on the end. Your, um, solar fields are all the way down at this end down here, so they'll have no bearing on the solar field.
There's to the left of the garage, is what you're saying. They don't even go that far.
Correct, yes.
I'm just trying to get my bearings there, thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's, um, I'm being told it's a 2017 photo. We probably could have gotten one a little bit more up to date, but you still wouldn't have seen the solar fields because they are further away. Depending on, you know, how much this, this transformer does use, whether or not it gets added to the solar field or not. See what the consumption level is.
Any other questions?
Okay, I'm good.
All righty, we need a motion to accept the Potomac Edison right of way.
I make a motion, we accept the, uh, Potomac Edison right of way at the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Burns. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye? Any nays? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. I'm gonna have, um, go ahead.
Item number four, approval of the community park disc golf course design.
I'm gonna have, um, Ms. Shaw come up and assist me with this presentation. She did a lot of work on the disc golf and she worked closely. We have some representatives from, uh, Fred Rock Disc Golf also, and they were assisted with, or they developed the plan for it. Yeah, that's good. I lost my cheat sheet note. Um, I'll just get it started and then I'll, I'll turn it over. I'll turn it over to Ms. Shaw. The, we submitted for, um, a community parks and playground grant for several different projects. Community Parks and Playground only approved our funding for the disc golf course. We were awarded the money earlier this year, spring of 2019. Uh, we submitted for fourteen thousand dollars. We are awarded the grant funding for the project, a full amount of fourteen thousand. CPMP grants are fully funded, there is no match required of the town. CPMP has limited the, um, funds that they have been giving municipalities over the past couple of years, or at least towards the town, because we were fortunate enough to receive such a large grant for the, the pool renovation. So, uh, Ms. Shaw, uh, had an idea for disc golf because it was something that would utilize our entire park. If you currently looked at the map of the park, um, right now we're only using about fifty to sixty percent of the park. There's an entire side of the park that is not being utilized. Disc golf is also an activity that everyone can participate in, that your activity level, um, if you can walk, if you can be in a wheelchair, if you can get around, you can participate in disc golf. Our parks are wonderful, we offer, um, baseball, tennis, basketball and swimming, you know, four months out of the year. Not everybody can participate in those. So in an effort to promote walkability and promote healthy lifestyles, um, disc golf seemed like a great option for this park. And I will, I'll turn this over to, to Ms. Shaw and, and we'll go through the presentation and we'd all...